Twenty-four regular board meeting of the Fenton Community High School District 100 Board to order. May I have a roll call?
Sorry.
That's okay. She's coming. Take your time. Sorry, guys. It's okay. Take your time. Figueroa?
Here.
Scudridge?
Here.
Haye?
Here.
Kovak? Brzezinski?
Here.
Regal? Here. We have a call. Our board president will not be in attendance this evening. When the board president is absent, it is the duty of the vice president to assume the role of president pro tem. For the duration of tonight's meeting, I, Juliette Regal, duly elected vice president, will serve as president pro tem and preside over the Fenton Community High School District 100 Board of Education. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. (Pleading) I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sam, please read our Fenton mission, beliefs, and Bison Way statements.
The Fenton mission statement: Cultivate successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. The Fenton belief statement: Successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment. Diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community. School and home collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engaged learning with state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The Bison Way: Students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become leaders and innovators of the future.
We will now open the public hearing for the 2024-2025 budget. Leo, will you please read the attestation certificate of the 2024-25 tentative budget preparation and availability?
Of course. Fenton High School District 100, Bensonville, Illinois, DuPage County, attestation of 24-25 tentative budget preparation and availability. I, Leonel Figueroa, board member and secretary, attest that a tentative budget for the fiscal year 24-25 was prepared and made available for public inspection for a period of at least 30 days prior to this hearing.
Thank you, Leo. Bruce, will you please review the tentative 2024-25 budget?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see all of you. So here we go. My first meeting back, and we're putting you to work already. This is just the advertisement that went in the paper, just for your reference, and then that's what it actually says. So it announces just a public hearing for this evening. Okay, so some of these things are kind of a review, and I know you're familiar with them, but just for reminders, I guess. The legal requires for budget adoption. We prepared it in tentative form that was approved by the board back in June. The public hearing notice was in advance. We just saw that. The public hearing is this evening, as we are all here for that. And then we just need to adopt it by the end of the month, September 30th, and then we will submit to ISB, and goes to the treasurer's office and the ROE as well. So we'll take care of all that once the board acts on it later this evening. So we're just trying to review what we -- what's changed, basically, from June, and then I will make some references to the activity for last year, too, if there's some notable things to talk about. But our sources of revenue, the local sources, our property taxes, of course, which is the largest source, personal property replacement taxes, that's sent to us through the Illinois Department of Revenue, student fees and other fees, interest on investments, those are all under the local source. State revenues are the Evidence-Based Funding, EBF, formerly known as General State Aid, and then the mandated categorical, that's transportation state aid. So those are two sources of state aid. We got a small library grant, but those, these are the main sources here for the state. And then the federal pieces, we have Title 1, 2, 3, the idea grant, Perkins, the National School Lunch Program, those are all federal sources. You'll note that there's no more ESER, so that ended. That's been spent, that money, and it is no longer available, so that's no longer a source. So you'll see later on the impact of that. The expenditure types, and I know, again, what they are to operate a school district, and this follows the State Board of Education, their budget form, the instructional programs, which is probably the largest, is the largest area in the budget, and the Ed Fund in particular, support services and administration, operations and maintenance, technology, which is a critical piece, transportation, capital projects, and debt service. So this year, we wanted to point out a few budget highlights. Of course, we're well aware of the STEM addition that's happening, ongoing, as we are very well aware of that. The water mitigation project is coming to an end, but there's still budgeted numbers, amounts in the budget to accommodate the runout, I guess, if you will, of that project. Summer maintenance, we had a very busy summer, but just a couple of them to highlight, the band room, which I haven't seen myself, but I hear is quite nice, so I've got to go check that out very soon. We created a storage area, too, adjacent to the cafeteria, and there's a mothers' room over there, so that we built some walls there and took existing space and needed, created some much-needed storage space and an area for the mothers. HVAC, the BAS system, the Building Automation System, that's ongoing. A lot of work was happening this summer, and it will continue to work, the work through the year and next summer. So they claim they will not be disruptive. We won't allow them to be disruptive to the student learning that's happening, but they can do some things behind the scenes to continue the work there. The Stronger Connections Grant, I'm not going to say too much, I don't want to steal Mr. Watts's thunder, but that's very exciting news. It's a federal grant, and I'm gonna, he's gonna talk about that later this evening, so I'll leave that to him. But it is budgeted, that grant. And then technology updates. Brittany's been doing a phenomenal job, all kinds of stuff happening there. The infrastructure, switches, network storage, all those types of things are happening, and much of that will be offset with E-rate funds, so that's exciting. So operating funds overview, and as you all know, the operating funds are the five key funds that we operate, education fund, the operations and maintenance, transportation, the IMRF fund, and working cash. So those are what we classify as our working, our operating funds. So I'm going to talk about that as a group. The biggest fund, of course, is the Ed Fund, so that's kind of, it just makes sense, I think, to combine them, and you'll see a breakout later on as we move through the presentation. But the major funding sources have not changed materially, with the exception of the PPRT and the Stronger Connections Grant, and I'll talk more about that as we move on. The major cost centers include salaries and benefits, I think no surprise there to anyone. We have three collective bargaining contracts, FVA, FLOS, SEIU. We're finishing up the SEIU, folks. At-will employees, another group we have, bus drivers, and administration. Minor changes to the budget, labor, non-labor costs since June. The budget comparison to last year's activity was 10.6%. On the revenue side, or, yeah, I'm sorry, continuing with the operating funds a little bit more specific, the major funding sources, sorry about that. My slides are out of order here, sorry about that. Operating fund revenues are projected to drop from the tentative budget by 1.8%, so that's about $707,000, and that's really a combination of the PPRT, personal property replacement taxes, and federal sources. I mentioned a few moments ago, ESER funds are no longer available, so, and I'll get more specific at how, what those amounts are as we move on. Property taxes, that's the bulk of our local sources and our revenue in general. That's 78% of total revenues and projected to increase by 3.9%, and that's over last year's activity. Other local revenues represent about 10.7%. Those would be student fees and other types of fees that would fall under the local category. State revenues at 6.7%, and that pretty much hovers in that range, right around 7% every year. There's not really much growth there with the tier funding that we're in. And then federal sources is 4.3%. So revenues are projected to be $38,371,942. That's about 2.6% less than last year's un-audited activity, and really, the two pieces there in the first bullet are really what's driving that decrease with the ESER funds and the PPRT. So a little more specifically, we have the property taxes. It's down less than a percent, so about a half a percent from the tentative budget, so $165,000, and that's final, based on dispersions that we've received from the previous year's taxes into this year. When those allocations come in, we made some minor adjustments there, so that's why that there's a tweaking there, I guess you could say. The PPRT, so we're close to about $1 million, $921,000 less than this past year, so we're, we were a couple of very high years with the economy doing well, businesses doing well, but that structure has changed somewhat in terms of how they're distributing the funds. So unfortunately, you know, we're taking a reduction there pretty significantly. Interest on investments, we're down about 27% from last year. That's based on lower interest rates. That's about $430,000. So it's another pretty good chunk that we are anticipated to not receive or earn. The Stronger Connections Grants, as I mentioned, that's $241,000, so that's, that was a nice add to the budget. NedSec, another add, it kicked up, I had $95,000 in the tentative budget, it's going to be about $246,000, so that's another $151,000. But overall, the decrease is about 1.8% or $707,000, as I kind of mentioned a moment ago.
Bruce?
Yes, sir.
Can you back up the page?
Oh, yes. That one?
Yeah, property taxes. I thought on the other prior page, it said property taxes went up.
They did, and that's based on the last year's activity. This is from, comparing it from the tentative. So it's been modestly adjusted down from the tentative budget in June, so.
Recipitated tad.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So no, good clarification there. Okay, on the expenditure side, again, the operating funds, those five funds, they're projected to increase by 1.3% from the tentative budget. The largest drivers, of course, are salaries and benefits, technology, equipment upgrades, TCD tuition, special education services. Overall, staffing levels are unchanged, so that, our staffing plan that was approved last spring, we're following that, and that, those levels are unchanged for what they were. And I think most, all the certified positions are filled, I think there may be a position or so in the teacher aide world, but we're in good shape there. The expenditure, expenditures are projected to be $39,291,897, and that's about 10.6% greater than last year. The overall, the operating funds does anticipate a projected shortfall of about $919,000. So we haven't had that for a while. The revenue's dropping and our expenses increasing, of course, created an imbalance there. The operating funds, expenditures, some more specifics, the salaries just changed modestly to 0.6%, so less than, less than a percent, about $136,000. Benefits went down, actually, based on final selections of benefits that staff chose, down about 1% or $51,000. Purchase services, that's up about 8.1% at $356,000. That does really include the Stronger Connections Grant, is really what's driving that. And also, the purchase services is greater this year just because of some transportation needs and leases and things like that that we've taken on. Supplies are just up modestly about 1.9%, and it's just based on activity and things that are happening and pricing that's come in for various products. Equipment outlay, this includes buses that we purchased, so we did a combination, you may recall last spring, we leased some buses, we purchased some buses, so that's kind, that's not the only piece there in equipment, but that's a big piece of the equipment budget is the busing purchases. And then tuition, of course, that's outside tuition placements, just off about half a percent. Overall, an increase of about 1.3%, 3.6% or $534,000. So here's the revenues at a glance, just to, I know you've seen this before, it's kind of a busy sheet, but the local taxes, sources on the fourth line down from the left is the variance compared to the tentative budget is 3.4% less. State's up a little bit, 5.4%, that's because of we adjusted the state aid for transportation, so that's up a little bit there. And then transferred, or federal, rather, is up 4.3%, still down overall from last year's activity, but up from the tentative as a result of the Stronger Connections Grant, that's a federal grant. So there you have it, all the way over to the right, that $38,371,942. That's about 1.8% less than what was in the tentative budget, or about $707,000. And then below that, you can see the tentative budgets there, what we, on the board acted on last June, and then the 23-24 budget, and then activity for 23-24, as well as for your On the expenditure side, again, similar format, all the various categories that we have and budget for, along the first line there is 24-25. The salary piece, and this, again, is all compared to the tentative budget back in June, so the fourth line down, left to right, the variance compared to tentative budget, salaries are up 0.6%, benefits are down 1, just over 1%. Purchase services are up 8.7%, supplies are up 1.9%, equipment 4.4%, tuition is just a half a percent, non-cap equipment 0.35, and the overall is that 1.36% increase over the tentative.
Bruce, I think.
Oh, yes, yes.
Read us another question.
Do you have a breakdown of that purchase services? I didn't see anything.
Yeah, I can give that to you. I don't have it in this presentation, but it includes professional services, technology purchases, it includes busing, leases, busing, contracted services. It's a, it's a pretty significant cost center for, in that area, but I can give you detail on that. Okay, here's the, my, my one and only shining pie chart there, so the salary.
Award-winning pie chart, I think it will be.
Yes, I'm not the expert in pie charts, but anyhow, I did want to show this one because I think it kind of, it's a good, you know, depiction of what it looks like in terms of how that, where the funds are spent. Salaries are the blue category there, 58%, benefits are 13%, followed by purchase services, and then down the line, supplies, equipment, tuition, and non-cap equipment. So about 71% of the budget is between salary and benefits, which is not unusual for a school district. So the final budget summary, this looks similar to a few slides earlier, but this does have your beginning and ending fund balances by fund. So your beginning balance, if we look through it from the Ed Fund, I won't go through all these, but the Ed Fund is that $19,194,847, that's the beginning balance, plus revenues of $32,166,817. Expenditures are $32,533,692, so that brings a variance of $366,875, with an estimated funding, fund balance of $18,827,972. Now, again, that assumes, we get all the revenues we're budgeting for, hopefully that or more would be ideal, and expenditures, it assumes we are spending the entire budget. So we hope to be no greater than what the budget is, but if we come in something less, we would likely see that variance shrink, which would be ideal. The subtotal at the bottom of that page, again, highlighted all the way over to the right, second column from the right, the 919,955, that includes the transfer from the working cash fund, so we are recommending a transfer. We'll bring that resolution to the board next month to help out the transportation fund, so that transfer of 550 will go to the transportation fund, that's what the budget includes, and then that results would come out of the working cash fund as an internal And then this is the divon operating funds. We didn't talk a lot about them, but they're special purpose funds, as the board is aware. We have our debt service funds, which is what we're paying our existing debt and our debt certificates. Even though debt certificates are paid out of operating funds and not levied monies, our auditors has advised, have advised us to account for the debt service activity in the debt service fund, so that's why you're seeing that a little bit higher than what it would normally otherwise be, but that's, that's the reason for that. And then the auditors, I'm sure will talk about that when they present the audit, I believe, next month they're coming. And then capital projects, of course, we know what that is. That would include the STEM addition, that would include what's left with the water mitigation, so there, there's kind of what the budget, based on what we have been resulted with, with Gilbane and the cash flow, and how those expenditures are going to occur throughout this year. So the end result there at the bottom line is the beginning fund balance up to $63,169, revenues of $39,871, less expenditures of $69,829, shows a variance of negative $29,955,616. Of course, we know that that is because of that, because of the bonds that were sold last year to fund the construction. So you receive those upfront, and then you kind of spend them down, that's kind of how that works. And just to kind of share with the board, what is this, how does this impact our fund balance? I just wanted to give you, I think it's a 10-year depiction of what our funding balance has been. The fiscal year, that's, those are the ending years, audited years, the ending balance and the months of reserves. We, we've been as high as 11, almost 12 months, 13 months, I guess. We are projecting next year, a projection of seven, just under eight months. I think when you start getting down to the four-month, three-month deal, that you've got to start taking things far more seriously, so we're not at that stage, but I just wanted to share that with the board of where we're at. So we're coming off of a 10-month reserves, so close to a year, and then we're going to drop down a little bit projected.
Bruce, do you just want to review again for those, for us about, with the water mitigation using fund balance money?
Yeah.
As part of this.
It was, and that was reflected in last year's budget. We moved $10 million from the education fund into the capital projects fund, so that reduced the fund balance as well quite a bit. And then, you know, we had the revenues from the debt certificates as well. So that's kind of how things are shaping up, what the budget looks like at this point, and we'll ask, ask the board to take formal action later on this evening.
I have a couple of questions, Bruce.
Yes, sir.
I apologize, I have brain fog tonight. What's our fiscal year? Everybody seems to have a different fiscal year. When do we end and start?
July 1st.
That's what I.
And then to June 30th.
All right, so we're, we finished last year, that's all closed out, we're operating in a new one. Did we carry any money over from last year, unassigned money?
We, we actually came out ahead, about $3 million ahead.
All right, so that'll help with all of this as well?
Yes.
That was my one question. And then now with some of the project money, we may be ending up in the positive, we'll be able to shift that in as well and offset some of this?
Well, that, that money will have to stay in capital projects because that's the intended purpose, and you really can't move that anywhere else.
What about our $10 million we put in there, if we have any money left from the water mitigation?
We could probably do that through resolution if we wanted to move somebody out into, something out into.
I mean, that would also help us offset a little bit if we have money sitting in the leftover from the, the water mitigation project that originated in education. I don't see why we couldn't move it back. I mean, it wouldn't hurt to help us offset some of these, so we have a couple little options.
We have some flexibility, yeah, we certainly do.
And last year, as far as the property tax money, how, what percentage did we actually receive of our projected?
We're actually very fortunate in DuPage County, the people pay their taxes, so we're at 99%.
Okay.
And that's pretty consistent.
Yeah, so we've consistently been high 90s, 98, 99?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that, that helps make me feel better about some of these numbers, because you hear about other communities and other districts that are looking at far less, and there's no way to recoup that money. All right, but those were my questions. Thank you, sir.
Okay, sure. Hey, Reid.
Just quickly, the $3 million that you mentioned that was left over from the, from the prior fiscal year, that's all educational fund money?
Yeah, it's in the operating funds, yes.
Yeah, because the, my, should I recall, you may have some extra money in the, in the construction or the capital fund, but that's restricted.
That's, yes, that's intended for those purposes, the debt certificates for the stumbling.
All right.
Thank you, Bruce. Are there any questions or clarifications needed from anybody in the gallery, seated in the gallery? We will now close the public hearing for the 2024-25 budget. Thank you. We will now move, we will now return to the regular for education meeting. Next is recognition, Kate.
Good evening, every, good evening, everyone. We have two different recognitions. The first one, we are recognizing our students who earned five on their AP exams last May. So every year, we like to celebrate the exceptional efforts of students who earned a five on their AP exams. As you know, students can earn college credit with a qualifying score, usually a three or higher, but five is the highest score. Last year, we had 19 students total earn a five, 10 of them were returning students, so nine of them were graduating seniors. All of them were given a celebratory yard sign, as well as Reese's Take Five candy bars. I'd like to point out and highlight that one of our students, Elijah, who's a junior, earned a five on two of his AP exams, which is incredibly difficult and something to be proud of. On the next slide, we have a video of several of the students sharing.
Valley Marine, senior, AP or AP US History.
Maya, junior, Willis Street.
Helena, junior, Willis Street.
Junior, junior, Willis Street.
Elijah Rivera, US History and English 3.
Alec, junior, Willis Street.
Laura, junior, Willis Street.
And I apologize, Elijah's actually a senior. He was a junior when he earned these.
But there are quite a few juniors on.
Yeah, there are, a bunch of kids that earned it as sophomores in the AP world. Yeah, so we're really proud of them, it's very exciting. All right, and our second recognition is for a fan favorite, Mr. Mark Farrell. All right, so we're proud to celebrate Mr. Mark Farrell for being selected as last week's Chicago Bear High School Coach of the Week. Mark led the football team to a 3-0 start as his first year back as head coach. His confidence, expectations, attention to detail, and strong team structure have made a big difference with our students. This nomination was reviewed and selected by a committee of internal Chicago Bear staff and executives, as well as a few representatives from Athletico Physical Therapy. Mark will get a handmade football with his name on it, and he will be recognized at the December 22nd game against the Detroit Lions, along with the other Coaches of the Week winners. The Bears programs are also making a $2,000 donation to the Fenton Football Program. We're really proud of Mark and all of the student athletes who are following his lead. This is the football team's best start since 2014. On the next slide, we'll see a really cool video of the PE department, Mark's family, and the Chicago Bears surprising him on Wednesday of last week.
Scott Bell, we manage the high school football. The reason we're on here today is to let you know that you were selected for Chicago Bears and Athletico of the Week. Congratulations.
Thank you.
(Cheering)
Fan dice, baby. (Inaudible).
We're going to be to the December 22nd game against the Lions, where you will recognize along with all the other coaches and new winners. I have a special award here that I'm going to show you in a minute. This is not yours, you're going to get one that's customized, you're going to.
This is not yours. You're going to get one that's customized. You're an amateur. We just wanted to take pictures. So congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, coach.
The radio award works is there's about eight people statewide nominate. We've actually nominated multiple weeks. And if you were nominated again, you won this league. We have a committee of internal people, technical inside players organization, and athletic organization on the award. So you're selected here. Great job you're doing here. Turnaround from last year to this year. Doing great. It's exciting to see you guys in the playoffs.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
They brought your families. You can celebrate.
Guys, thank you very much. Hey, great job. Hey, Vice of Pride, here we go. Hey, Vice of Pride on three. One, two, three.
We couldn't be more proud of Mark.
Thank you. Yeah, it's good to be back after a little hiatus away from being a coach here. But given the opportunity, work with our kids, you know, pushing them to be better, reach expectations. The kids have been great. The other coaches have put in a lot of time. Watching the kids succeed is very rewarding and very honored to receive the award. But the most important thing is a little bit better every day. That's what we preach to the kids. And, you know, we haven't been to the playoffs in a while. So that's what the goal is, get them to reach their goal. So, thank you. Oh, my God.
Sometimes I do that.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations. You can put your shades on if you want.
So yes, there you go, right in the middle. There you go.
All right. What do I do?
I'm going to stand here.
All right.
Try to balance it out a little bit.
All right, come on.
Nice. That's all right. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I think Emma's not drunk.
Congratulations. I appreciate it.
Gosh, they're going to get us all teared up here. Karen, do we have any public comments tonight? Yes, we do. We have one, Larry Andaloni. As a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker.
I just wanted to come in and thank all the board members for showing up today and donating your valuable time to both Fenton High School and Bensonwood Wooddale Community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry. Next is informational items. Sam?
Okay, we're going to start out tonight with the Stronger Connections Grant. Coming from the gallery, we have Rich Watts, our Director of Special Education. Like to thank him when we brought forward this concept. He, he kind of, to use a football analogy, took the ball and ran with it. Sorry, Mark, he's still here. He's not listening. But he really was able to put this to paper and we received the grant. And so now he's going to go through for everyone what we want to emphasize here with this, with this Stronger Connections Grant.
All right. So I want to tell you more about the Stronger Connections Grant. So we secured over $241,000 through a federally competitive grant fund focusing, focusing on mental health service and with the goal of strengthening our community connections. So what will this grant do for our Fenton students and families? It will provide no-cost mental health treatment groups for all of our students. And this will be through professional mental health therapists that will come to Fenton to run these groups. So the groups will actually take place at Fenton for this portion of the grant. So what will these groups look like for our students? We have, we're going to have trauma groups, anxiety groups, substance use prevention groups, and grief groups, all run by professionals in those specific areas. We will, for our parents, there is consent. So we will reach out to you about your students to get them into the groups. So it won't just happen without you. We're going to have bilingual English and Spanish groups in all of these areas. And they will run during the school day at Fenton. All right. How else will this grant help Fenton families and students through our BeSure Consulting partnership? So as you all are aware, this is an excellent partnership that's, that's going to support our students, families, and staff with all of our safety components, online and in person. How else will it help Fenton? At our school tutoring hours, over 450 hours will be offered through our, for our teachers to be able to tutor our students in need of academic supports. It will also cover the cost for this year and for next year for the parent square community direct messaging so that we can have a direct messaging pathway for our teachers, coaches, and families for emergency learns. And it's automatically translated to a parent's preferred language. And this grant will help us for years to come. So far, the Fenton Cares Grant, just to give you a recap of what that is, where we are with that right now, 179 of our families have had mental health care visits, possible, no-cost visits made possible through this grant so far. And the Stronger Connections Grant is going to add to this. So it'll help us strengthen this support. So at the current rate, our families are using, the service will be in place for our families and students through March of 2026. And obviously, if, we're encouraging our families to use it more, right? So if that happens, it won't last quite as long, but more families will get helped, right? That's the idea there. I know that was quick. This is going to be very helpful for our students for academic and for mental health care. Any questions for me?
This program goes on for a couple of years, you say?
So the grant itself is for one year with a possible extension for longer that I'll apply for as soon as they offer me the chance to.
Okay. Well, because we can offer these services because we have the grant currently, is that correct?
Correct. The grant is giving us the opportunity to do this.
So what happens when the grant goes away, when the grant ends?
Yeah, that's a great question. So our counselors are right now, like we work on putting groups together to help reinforce it after the grant ends. So right now, it's outside mental health professionals, but we're also reinforcing our current staff to help students in-house, too. So it's both.
I'm not sure I got, I'm not sure I understand that. So the grant ends, or the second, or the second year grant ends, whatever, if you're able to get an extension, so to speak. Will these services still have to be funded somehow? Well, I think, I think we evaluate the programs once they're implemented, like parent square is new this year, BeSure is new this year. So I think we evaluate them as we go. And then if the grant money runs out and we don't have other grant opportunities, then we have to evaluate whether we continue or not. Some, some would probably continue, some may not, based on funding. So there's no sunset on this program?
Well, the sunset would be based on what's currently in, in the account, right? So as families utilize the funds, it's exhausted. Once families are finished utilizing it, then, then we would look for additional grant sources. Actually, in the meantime, that's how we found this one, looking for additional grant sources to try to reinforce it. Reaching out, I kind of like always, meeting with all my colleagues in different districts, I'm looking for every opportunity to find places and money out there because mental health's a nationwide problem, right? So if there's sources of money out there, look for it. I'm looking for that.
The 450 hours of teacher tutoring collects also covered under the grant funding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Maybe I'm out of line. I'm sorry. Thank you, Rich. And we have Lorenzo coming up to give our equity report.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. Jumping way ahead. Getting us out of here.
All right. Appreciate it. All right. Good evening. It's good to be back and check in with, with the board. It's been a while. It's my pleasure to give some equity updates from our building. Like I said, it's the first time I come and give equity updates this, this year. But we've been doing a lot just in the first month that we've been together. So why don't we get into it? And then if you have any questions or suggestions for, for stuff to be happening around our school, I'm, I'm here. So first off, the diversity committee, which I lead, but is basically made up of staff, teachers, students, and some administrators. We've had our first two meetings already. So that committee is, is what I call like one of the more fun committees because our task on diversity committee is just to make sure that every student across the building feels included and welcome and like they belong at Fenton High School. So we try to do fun events that involve, that are, that are meaningful and culturally relevant to make sure everybody feels that way. So from that committee, we've already put together a number of things, most of them related to Hispanic Heritage Month, just because that started September 16th and continues on to October 16th. So it's one of our first cultural events throughout the year and fitting because so much of our population identifies as Latino as well. So we've, we took 14 students, 15 students to the Guatemalan Independence Day Parade on a Sunday. We have a large population of Guatemalan students from Guatemala, right? And it was, it was great to see them give up their Sunday just to take a field trip, optional, and march in a parade with the Fenton banner and have a lot of fun doing that. We've got a DJ Mondays here at Fenton, our TGIM. Thank God it's Monday. We got, we start the day off with the DJ who used to be a student here. He was actually an EL student from Guatemala. He went into DJ, has his own little business. But he's been good enough to come and play some music to start off our Mondays before class starts. We've had some successful fundraisers aligned with Hispanic Heritage Month. Students and ALAS, our Association for Latin American Students, sold Conchas or it's like that sweet bread. You know what they are, right? Next time I'll bring, I'll show and tell. But they're really successful. They sold out. The kids made a lot of money, had a lot of fun doing so. We've been selling paletas of senior sophomore class. I've been selling paletas of frozen obstacles, I guess, during lunch periods as well. That's been going well. And more stuff to come. We have Hispanic Heritage Spirit Week planned to end starting October 7th to October 11th. We're going to have a band come and visit us. So shout out to Mr. Garrett George for bringing in a band, an actual professional band through a music grant that'll perform for our students on October 16th tentatively. And we've got some Dia de los Muertos, Day of the Dead activities planned. Here's some pictures from some of the things we've been going through.
Can I just ask, where was the Guatemalan parade? Where?
That was in the city. That was in Albany Park.
Oh, okay.
So that's another location where there's a, a large population of Guatemalan community. And so they have it there. It starts at a park on Kimball and California and then just goes down. So they, they marched. They were marching right behind a motorcycle crew. So they got a kick out of the motorcycle guys, like let them rev, let our kids rev their engines. I didn't take a picture of that, but it was pretty cool for them. There you see some pictures on the left, some of the kids that went on, on the parade. I included up there, top left, BSU, Black Student Union selected. Ms. Brock just took those students to an experience on Navy Pier, right? What is it called?
Flyover.
Flyover Chicago. They had a lot of fun. Some pictures from the Conchas sale. And then on the top right, even this is also comes from diversity and equity work, but our own Spanish teacher, Amy Vasquez, has put together a Spanish class for teachers and staff, right? So our staff can learn some Spanish. If they don't know, this is voluntary after school. They come and they learn some Spanish and that's been really successful. So there you see a pretty cool class of our teachers learning some Spanish. Just to share this message I got. So this is from a teacher, actually. So she texted me this, "Hi, sorry to text, but I had to tell you this. The student said she, she told you about a Cuban song and today they played it during the passing period. She started crying because it reminded her of home. She said she had told you about it and she was so happy to hear. It made me so happy." And basically, thank you for that. I had to share it with you. So that, I wanted to share that because like sometimes equity work is seen as something that's like kind of not rigorous, not really as important as the content that goes on in the school. But you have to understand that, you know, none of that academic rigor can happen if kids don't feel welcome and like they belong to the building and like the administration and the teachers in the building. See them for who they are, recognize them, and, and let them be themselves and let them thrive and be themselves. So this is what it's all about. This is why we put together these little events. This is why we have kids on the committees and teachers. Little moments like this will enable our kids to feel like they belong here, even if they're very, very far away from home. And so that's, that's what keeps us centered. That's why we keep pushing. To that end, a more formalized way to make sure that our kids are being welcomed and have things accessible to them is the Delt. Just a quick refresher, the Delt stands for District Equity Leadership Team. That's made up of administrators, everyone on the admin team, and teachers that volunteer their time, who, who make equity a passion of theirs as well. We have a lot of educators who are really passionate about it. There are five strands who focus on creating SMART goals, SMART meaning like database, measurable goals that we can accomplish and see progress towards. These are the strands. There's a system strand, so takes care of some bigger picture issues, policy, and things like that. Teaching and learning focused on pedagogy, what happens in the classroom. Student voice, climate, and culture. Professional learning, so development that we give to our teachers. And family and community as agency. So each strand has about eight to 10 members, administrators interspersed throughout, as well as teachers. And they all set their goals. This past August 30th, we actually had a whole Delt team meeting. We call it a reset, just because it's been a while since the Delt, it's the first time it's happened since I've been here, that the whole Delt got together. So we subbed teachers out. It was a little hectic because it's a big group, but it's important to us. And so if we're saying equity is a priority here, we actually have to follow through with that. And so there were some great goals that were had. And this is kind of the backbone of, of our equity work here. If you want to take a look at the details of the equity action plan that we're working on, it's linked here in the slideshow. I can share it to you, with you or email it as well. But I think everyone left that meeting feeling energized and renewed because we're, we've got some fresh ideas and, and we feel like we can make some progress. So that's my, my big equity update. If you have any questions, I can do my best to answer them. If you have any suggestions for celebrations, I can take notes, too.
Great. Thank you, Lorenzo. Appreciate that. Okay, next item I will go through, it's a Wooddale TIF update. For those of you that aren't aware, there was a Wooddale TIF that was just voted upon fairly recently. Basically, there's a little map there, a Foster and Bussie Highway. There's going to be a pretty large data center going in there, a few other buildings, most likely like an electrical station, just specifically to help in that region. likely like an electrical station just specifically to help in that region. This is a 23-year, what they call a redevelopment project area. We have been told that it's expected to possibly end early, but of course, that's not guaranteed, but thought I'd make note of that. For example, when you add up the homes that were in that area for 2023 EAV is approximately 6.5 million. They estimate that by near the end of the TIF, 2048 EAV would be 20 million to 37 million, somewhere in that range. There was several meetings on this. There was a vote at what's called the JRB meeting, the Joint Review Board. There were six yes votes, two no votes. I voted on behalf of Fenton and I abstained because we were looking for, you know, as much of a favorable situation as we could, clearly passed. I can report out though that any surplus funds as defined by the Act should be distributed to the affected taxing districts, which we would be one of them, upon closure and termination. So it's a possibility, as time goes on, there could be some surplus funds that could come our way, so.
That could be 20 years from now?
Right.
For instance?
Yes.
And Sam, just for clarification, even if the JRB all voted no, Wooddale could still go ahead and do this, correct?
Yeah, my understanding is what they would then do, if everyone voted no, they would have to reconvene, I believe within 30 days and try to work something out. And I don't know, Bruce, you've been a part of more of these than I have, but I don't know, like if there was a lot of no's.
Yeah, I was under the impression that whether we voted yes or no doesn't matter, it's more of a courtesy until they come to renew.
Yeah.
When it comes to the renewal, our no vote actually carries weight.
Right, yeah.
So how many TIF districts are we on here now, Bruce?
Between the two communities or just?
Yes.
Probably about seven or eight, yeah.
So when we look at our budgetary constraints, we can thank the Village of Bensonville and the City of Wooddale for their TIF districts. All the districts are affected by this. Yes, this is my pet peeve and this is exactly why it's my pet peeve, because it's unfair that the library district, the school district, the fire district, the park district and every other district. I understand some of these TIF districts are necessary, but I feel some of these TIF districts are stretching the rules a little bit and I am less than pleased with this, not that it matters, they're going to do what they want to do, but when people start yelling at us about our budget, I suggest they talk to the City of Wooddale, to the Village of Bensonville and express their concern about the TIF districts that are being acted left and right in this area because all the districts are suffering. And neither the city or the village are going to listen to this and call that my point of personal privilege. This is horseshit.
Yeah, the only thing I would say, the only thing I would say about this one is it's a data center, it's not going to impact us enrollment wise, there will be no students
But all that money we could be getting, that we could be using to fix our problems is unavailable to us for how many years?
Well, we hope less than 23.
But yeah, the term is 23, yeah.
Yeah, so for up to 23 years, that money could be coming into us, supplementing what we're losing. It just, never mind, I'm going to stop now before I really say something, I'll regret.
That's okay. Any other thoughts or comments or questions? Okay. Let's move on to a much more pleasant topic, Homecoming Week highlights, Kate.
Before I go into Homecoming, I just really want to thank Rich and Lorenzo again. I think you can hear both Rich Watson, Lorenzo Rubio bring such passion around mental health and making students feel belonging and what those two men contribute every day make Fenton a different place and a better place for kids to be. So, you know, just to really shout out to both of them. But it's Homecoming Week, we're in the middle of it, we're excited about it. It is Disco Fever at Fenton High School. So that is the theme that the students chose and we're having a good time with it. We've had a couple of spirit days so far, you can see there Sam in his jammies with a couple of other kids. This was on Monday, you can see those are seniors.
But let's talk about the four girls that were showing pride in their pajamas too. I mean, I think.
Yeah, of course, of course, the students. This was, so what the seniors do is we have the sanctioned days, right, which it was pajama day and then 70's day, today was tie dye, tomorrow's class colors, but then the seniors kind of do their own thing at the same time. Monday was.
Did you say today was tie dye day?
Today was tie dye day, yeah, there we go. Anything you can carry is what it was. So they all brought different items instead of a backpack that they could carry their things. And so you can see we have a crock pot there, a stroller, you know, so kids came up with some creative ideas, that was seniors. Another thing that we have going on, clicker. Okay, this isn't necessarily a part of Homecoming, but something that we had going on over the weekend was our day of service. So this is something that our link crew has been putting together as a way to give back to the community, but also we know thanks that Fenton has a 25-hour community service requirement. So we try to offer opportunities for our kids to get out there in the community and get some of the community service. So we had about 60 students, many of them freshmen, who were out and about Fisher Farms, Blackhawk, Redmond, and then also doing things around the school. So it's good for the community, good for our kids. Here is 70's day, we can also see a little bit of the window decorating that students were doing. So the windows, it's mostly clubs and activities get different windows that they can decorate. Some of it is classes that do it, but it just adds a little bit more spirit for us. So the kids have a good time doing that. This was a new one that the kids brought in, this was a fundraiser, so kids paid, I think it was a dollar for a yard of tape. And there were some teachers who they were able to tape to the wall. So we have Mr. Lorigio from the Business Department and Mr. Bader were two of the teachers, there were a couple more. But so that was a new addition to Homecoming Week this week or this year. Tonight is movie night, so right now, the last time I looked, we had about 70 kids down there watching Mamma Mia. Tomorrow, we're really excited about this, we're going to continue with our bonfire, which we've been doing for the past couple of years. But this year, we're lucky enough to be able to partner with a varsity soccer game. So we'll have the boys varsity soccer game, which will be nice for them to also be highlighted, and then the bonfire afterwards. Of course, Friday night is our home football game and then Saturday night is the dance here at Fenton Disco Fever. So we're excited about that. The kids love the DJ who is also an alum, so that's exciting. So that's Homecoming. And then another exciting thing to highlight is our Young People's Music Grant. So when Mr. Rubio was talking about the band that's coming in in October, I think it's Pandoche, this is part of the Young People's Music Grant. Garrett George is foundational in this grant. Fenton has been awarded this grant for the past seven years and over the past seven years, it's been about $50,000 that has been donated to Fenton. Over the years, a lot of it has been used to purchase new instruments, which has been great, but another part of the grant, Mr. George has really put towards a stipulation is cultural awareness. So building different connections to professional bands that represent different cultures. So he, I spoke with him and he told me about how it really has been awesome for his own professional development, for the professional development of students, and that it has allowed him to weave in a lot of these different techniques and types of music into the curriculum so that it's not just like, oh, during Hispanic Heritage Month, we're learning this, but truly, kids are learning these different techniques from different cultures throughout the year and it's part of the curriculum. So once again, we're really thankful for that and it's something that makes our school a better place.
Thank you. Okay. Another exciting topic for me here, school calendar update. Unfortunately, last Friday, we had a utility contractor accidentally cut the main power, so therefore, large swaths of the building were without power. Fortunately, our students, our staff, our administrative team acted very appropriately. There was never a safety issue throughout. However, it became apparent that that was not going to be restored until late in the afternoon and so we dismissed early that day about 9:45 without incident. And I want to report that it does count on the school calendar as a school date, it's what's called an interrupted school day, something that was beyond our control. And since we had over an hour of instruction, it counts as a day. So we will not need to make that day up. Next slide. Foyers?
Yeah, so we have resolved seven foyers in the last month. So you can see the list there at the top, Canon USA, Lake County Gazette submitted five foyers and then Smart Peak here, that's a quarterly one.
Our next item is the consent agenda, the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call. Well, let me go back a moment. Do I talk, do we first discuss or do we do the roll call first?
You can do a big discussion, yeah.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Figaro?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Hayde?
Yes.
Kovak? Rizinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Abstain.
Motion passed. Okay, the next item is changes to the 2024-25 tentative budget. Does anyone want to discuss this?
Discussion. I have a question.
Yes.
If I recall, at least in round terms, there was a shortfall of about $900,000. Thank you moved, you know, $500,000 from another fund. But in round terms, I thought there was someplace in the neighborhood of a, still a $450,000 shortfall, you had to pull out of reserves, round terms. So I saw a note that, you know, the shortfall was going to try to be managed, but my question is, is whether there's going to be any active programs to try to actually reduce expenses to match the income.
You know, I would say, look, obviously, we looked at this in the hearing, anytime there's a tentative budget or a budget, we even looked at the data from 2023, 2024 to 2024, 25, and typically, the budget is going to come in under what the projected budget is. So not saying that's going to happen for sure, but looking at the data, it was several, a couple million less, I believe, than what was projected, as the expenses were also were under what was projected. So I think it's important, it's important to see that, yes, we're not, maybe won't have a $3 million surplus this coming year, but I also think that, you know, many of the programs we've discussed, even those that are grant funded, are important and necessary. So I think generally, if we watch our spending and we monitor this monthly, kind of see where we're at, you know, I'm confident we'll be in a decent position. So there's nothing like, we now have an active program where we need to cut this or we need to cut that, but I think good fiscal management's always smart and that's what we should be able to do this year.
Do we have any plumeri projections into the following year? I know we don't have a crystal ball, but I know we do have some retirees, we have a few other changes coming, because I know as we discussed, the contracts that we saw it was going to be higher in the beginning, but trail off as people retired and new people came in. So I think we probably need to keep that in mind, that next year, we're going to start to see a little of those benefits.
We will, there's a big group leaving, is it this year or next year?
This upcoming year.
Yeah, this upcoming year. So that'll take some pressure off the budget, without a doubt.
Five teachers are retiring at the end of this year.
Are you going to be, the question is, will they be replaced because enrollment continues to go down year after year?
Well, that's part of the staffing process we go through in the spring. If there's possible, there could be some attrition based on numbers and who's retiring and what program are they in. It's certainly an opportunity to look at that, but that will be done in the spring.
But even if we need to replace them, we're bringing in people who are at the bottom end of the scale, that'll be making less. And then hopefully, we'll see different changes in our taxes coming in and it's fluid, we need to watch it. I don't think we're anywhere near a panic mode yet, it's just something we need to be aware of. And I do remember we discussed this potential when we granted the contracts, which we all thought were fair at the time. You can never project what's going to happen with property taxes. TIF districts don't help, so I mean, we're in far better shape than a lot of other places, we're just not as good as we're used to being, in my opinion.
Well, and also, obviously, we're super excited about the STEM wing, but there's going to be, you know, we have to pay for that.
Right, and that's what we got to buy for and that's also going to reflect in our budget, we increased our debt and a few other things, but it's all planned and managed expenses.
That's right.
So we just got to work through it.
It's like anything else, we have to manage appropriately because it's going to be a tremendous asset for our district, but it adds a different dynamic to what we look at each year.
I know we passed that part, but John mentioned it again and I hate to mention it because it ruffles John's. But are we close to any of the TIF districts ending or like they're?
Yeah, Bensonville's expected to have one end this year, that'll impact the levy for next year.
Okay, that's good.
So Bruce does that as part of his levy and is there any additional?
And we had one come up this past year as well, so that helped a lot.
It was in Bensonville or what?
Of Bensonville, yeah.
Wooddale just discovered TIF districts in the last three years, Bensonville's had them for a while.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Were you going to say anything else, Sam?
No.
Okay. Our next item is the adoption of the 2024-25 tentative budget. May I have a motion that the Board of Education accepts the following? The public hearing documents, the adoption of budget resolution, the adoption of the 2024-25 budget. Any discussion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call? Figaro?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Hayde?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
No.
Motion's passed. Does anyone have any committee reports?
I can report out the Bensonville Foundation. We had a meeting, we had a meeting on July 25th. We had received the Subaru money, plus looked at our past funds, we had received 13 requests. Two of those were what we call mini grants. After review, nine were approved, one was denied and two were removed or no action was taken at that time. The balances are about where they would be after we have most of the payouts made. There's another meeting scheduled for tomorrow and I'm hoping to make it depending on how an appointment I have to take, my mother two pans out. I hope Kent can make it if I can't, but that's really our, and we were a recipient of another foundation donation. We had a good showing from our tennis parents, our tennis students, Sam was there as well. Who else was there, Sam? I can't remember.
Rick was there.
Rick was there, yeah, sorry, Rick, I'm getting tired, my apologies. But it was a good showing and yeah, I think it went very well and the foundation, some people didn't get everything they asked for, most people got something. I think it was all appropriately handled and it was a very productive meeting, very long meeting for the foundation. So that's all I have to report on that and hopefully I'll make tomorrow's and have more to report next meeting.
I can report out on the Lend meeting, which was last week. Lend is basically kind of a legislative lobbying group, I think Bruce is what I would describe it as. And many superintendents, our business officers, board members were there. Basically, there's a few themes out there right now that we're looking at. One is obviously funding. Most of DuPage County is tier three or tier four funding, which means, as you saw tonight, most of our funds come from property taxes. There's a couple, tier one, tier two, which means that the state, basically through their EBF funding system, is kind of kicking in a little bit more money to those districts to help them in various ways. So that was part of the discussion. The state seems committed to that type of a system, although it doesn't have a whole lot of impact on us, but that was a topic. There's also a topic on bus drivers, and what are the qualifications for a bus driver? It's actually a pretty stringent process. As you can imagine, it's an important position to drive kids around. It's also an expensive proposition, so there was some talk of reforming that. And then the other area was dual credit. Dual credit with community colleges is something that we pursued here pretty aggressively, as a lot of districts have. However, throughout the state, there's kind of varying systems that occur between the different communities, and what counts and what doesn't, and how many hours a teacher needs to have, and should they do a professional development plan. So it's sort of different from department to department. So there's some talk of trying to make that more of a uniform process. However, as you can imagine, there's a lot of autonomy that are in community colleges, and that's not, that's not a simple proposition. So the bottom line is, some of these ideas really aren't happening right now, there's been discussions, there's been votes. They did say that perhaps in the lame duck session that is approaching pretty soon, there could be some movement on some of these issues, but right now, it's more just discussion than letting the legislative process play out. So that's Lend. Also, I was at the NetSec meeting, it was pretty uneventful, kind of beginning of the year, like it is here, beginning of their fiscal year. There was a presentation made by the transition program, some of the projects that they're working on, and what their students are working on, so that was part of that meeting, but otherwise, it was a fairly uneventful meeting. And then I would say, well, I just keep going, the IASB delegate, that would be Mr. Lewis, and he, that won't be until the triple I conference, so that's something that he's already committed to attend on our behalf. There was no policy meeting, and there was no finance and facilities meeting, and there was no DEI meeting. I think that covers it.
All right, well, thank you, Sam. Our next board meeting is Wednesday, October 23rd, at 7:00 PM, with a tentative finance and facilities committee meeting at 6:00 PM, prior to the regular board meeting. May I have a motion and a second to go into closed session for the following? Five, Illinois CS 120/2C for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of Fenton Community High School District 100. B, five, Illinois CS 120/C2 for the collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. C, five, Illinois CS 120/2C11 litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case, the basis for the finding shall be record or, and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. May I have a motion and a second to adjourned closed session?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call. Figaro?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Haye?
Yes.
Rzynski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'll make it.
Roll call, Radzinski?
Yes, please.
Fade?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 Need to adjourn?